Okay, good evening, everyone. I call the meeting of the Crestwood Board of Education Study Session to order. Madam Secretary, can you do a roll call, please?
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Baydun.
Here.
Salzayat.
Here.
Ms. Hawaz.
Here.
Myself, here. Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. Sabal.
Here.
Chair of the Forum.
Thank you. Okay. So I believe we have agenda items. Emergency planning presentation. Dr. Musallam.
Thank you, Madam President. So in a moment, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. O'Hara. Mr. Awada was supposed to present, but he was not able to join us this evening. So Mrs. O'Hara will go through this presentation for the board, and then, if I may request, if you can hold all questions until the end, so we can answer them all at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, just an update. The Blue Line security, we met with the Blue Line team and our administrative team, and talked about the focus for the upcoming school year. The emphasis is going to be on visibility for them, building relationships within the school community, individualized responses to special needs populations. So if there are students that have unique needs, the Blue Line staff will be made aware to work with those students. There'll be three Blue Line personnel at CHS and at RMS, and then one at Kinlock, Highview, and Hillcrest. So we're adding an additional one at each elementary, which was not the case last school year. The okay to say is something that Mr. Awada is currently registering all of our schools, and then the okay to say will be listed on the website with a school staff personnel that will be, receive the information if somebody was to report something, and Mr. Awada will be the additional layer of support. So there's two staff members that are getting the report on the okay to say. It'll be located on every district and school website, and the schools are going to introduce the program again to students during the anti-bullying assembly at the start of the school year. Just so we're providing a safe way for students to report to staff without having to leave a classroom or walk into an office. The community partnerships, Mr. Awada organized practice lockdowns at CHS and Kinlock in collaboration with Dearborn Heights Police Department. And those were done at the end of the school year. We're going to do the same at Riverside, Highview, and Hillcrest by the end of September, so staff and students are familiar of what those look like. Schedule tabletop exercises for CHS and Kinlock. Mr. Awada, with this, based on feedback, created go-bags for all schools that are also, that were made available at the Dearborn Heights Police Department. So they have a packet of information that breaks down, so it looks like this. It breaks down all the information that first responders need when coming to our building in case of emergency. They have the emergency phone list, the emergency operation plans, building maps, master keys, and access to all buildings. So if they are coming to the site, they have all the information that they need. Mr. Awada, Mr. Green, and a outside company conducted an assessment of all schools to determine the signal strength and hardware needs in terms of communication. The team is working to purchase additional walkie-talkies that support our communication needs. There'll be the need of, like, for a repeater, well, that way, in case of an emergency, somebody from a central location could communicate with all buildings in an instant. So through a channel access, Dr. Musallam, Chief of Police, somebody could respond and take over so that key personnel in a building would have instant communication with an outside source. Night lock, door locks will be installed. We're kind of next on the list. The vendor ran into some hiccups with their current install, so we will be the next district to have those installed. Camera upgrades and installation has been delayed due to supply chain issues. We're not alone in that, but just that we're working with the vendor, trying to expedite delivery and installation of those components. Our team is looking at future grant opportunities to support funding of any additional security needs. Our team will determine the priority and tackle those through funding sources during the upcoming school year. And then our administrators will review lockdown and fire drill procedures prior to the start of the school year with their teams, and then work with the Dearborn Heights Police Department on setting up Alice training for our staff for the upcoming school year.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Berry?
Yes. My question is, this is great, great information. Kudos to Mr. Awada, putting all this together. As far as Blue Line is concerned, have we, are we, did you guys talk about what their processes are, what they can do, what they can't do? Because I understood that prior to this, that they didn't know exactly. For instance, if there was kids fighting, are they allowed to stop them? Have we talked about those processes?
Yes, and there, we talked about the need for de-escalation. So CPI is kind of the school function. So we talked about having the Blue Line staff that works within our schools to be CPI certified. That's what our, a lot of our support staff, special education staff, is trained because it's, if you do have to go hands-on, it's something that focuses on the de-escalation, not the hands-on. It's focused on the strategies to talk a student down, make sure they're safe, follow them, avoid those things. And so we are going to work with, within our schedule to get their staff trained in that, the de-escalation piece. And then I myself, when we met with the team, made sure that we really were kind of creating, like, a binder so that they know if a student has an individualized behavior plan that warrants a cool-off pass, and they're in the hallway and they're not responding, they just want to make sure that they're going where they need to be safe, and that, you know, we're not, we're following kind of all the things that the unique needs of a student might have in place.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, so if we had a group of teenagers or whatever, students going at it and whatever, what would the process be on Blue Line's side? What can they, what can't they do exactly? I know you're saying they can use CPI, but what about if it's just out of control and it's over-escalated? Are we giving them the authority to?
Well, it's no, it's no different than, like, with a teach, like, the first, the first to the site is working on this, ensuring the safety of all. And if that's moving this one, it's those pieces, but again, with the safety of the student in mind.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we are letting them do their job.
Oh, absolutely.
So we don't have those issues that we've had in the past. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair? Yeah, nice job, Andrea. It sucks getting, you know, assigned something last minute.
No, that's okay. Mr. Awada's part of my team, so I've been informed.
Okay, good. What about Cherry Hill Baptist as far as security?
So Cherry Hill, we have not set aside Blue Line as of yet.
Okay.
And the reason for that is because we want to identify how and what will be their procedure and process. We wanted to make sure we had enough staffing for the other schools at this point. We are in conversation about having somebody from Blue Line over there, but we don't, we don't know if it's going to be a full day, a half day, how that's going to work, if they can rotate somebody in to support. So that's still in conversation.
All right. Do we have an internal security person that might be there until we get Blue Line in place, or?
We do not.
I didn't know.
Yeah, no, we do not.
We were on staffing.
We do not. It's, we're still have the whole building on lockdown, so you still only can come in being buzzed in.
Yeah.
But we don't have a security personnel at this time there, but we're working on, looking at some things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question? Ms. Hawaz?
Just to be clear from what Nadia was saying, I know in the past there was confusion, but a security personnel, teacher, staff, any really adult can be hands-on when the two children or children are fighting, and they're to walk in there, separate them, you know, touch them, push them aside, whatever, to stop the violence, stop the fighting. They're allowed to do that, correct?
Yes, because the, I mean, you're.
No, no, I just, I just heard you say the certification, but.
No, I was saying, our focus with, is the de-escalation prior to, during, yes.
Okay, yeah, I just, I didn't want somebody watching this to think that, you know, they couldn't do that or anything like that.
Safety of students is always the priority, in terms of ensuring that they're separate.
And then walkie-talkies, because I know those can get extremely costly. How many were we thinking of getting, and to whom would all have it, like, would the principals, I would assume would have it enough, so they can, you know, keep track of everything? You know, all of that, I guess, and then, and I know just from work, you've got to watch the language on those too, because you get fined for that, too.
So in the discussions, like, at Riverside, it was that there would be like a captain hallway. So there'd be one housed on each floor of the first, second, and third floor of this part. One in the new wing, one in the rotation hallway, and then administrative team would have it. At the elementaries, based on student needs, their crisis team members, where let's say if you have a student who elopes the building, and somebody needs to call for the team, that those members of the team have that. The buildings are identifying through kind of their crisis plan, and their security plans, who would have access, but obviously would be administrators, and then the support staff, who, in a situation of needing to leave, can leave while students are being monitored by a classroom teacher. So it would be perhaps an EL teacher, a Title I, somebody who has the ability to leave to respond.
But they would have to have this on at all times to be able to actually hear the call?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrea. Mr. Sabal?
Yeah, a few questions. Sorry.
That's okay.
Okay to say. Who has access to this, within the district and outside of it?
To get, to get the information?
Correct.
So a building administrator and Mr. Awada receive the information.
Does it go to the police, or is that something we need to escalate after we hear, or?
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure I didn't know.
Yes.
The police department has their own pipeline and okay to say, because somebody can go to Dearborn Heights Police Department. We have our own pipeline. If we see that there's something that we need to raise up, then we contact our SRO, and we bring them in.
Okay. I got, I'm sorry, I got a couple of questions. We were talking about the walkie-talkies. I hate to take my mind where I don't want it to go.
Right.
But unfortunately, the media's taken my mind there. I know they're costly, you know, but they're such a necessity. And I think we have to have earpieces that go with them. The last thing you want is a walkie-talkie going off in the middle of something, and people hearing that. And I know it adds to the cost, but at the end of the day, you know, discretion is the most important thing. And the ability for people not to hear information that they shouldn't be hearing is a big piece. So something for you guys to think about when you run your cost analysis on this. But I'm not going to tell you, this is my own personal opinion, and I know a few other people may feel the same way. Cost should not be a factor in the children's safety. I think every one of us agrees, right?
Absolutely.
Yep.
And then cameras. How many cameras are we installing, or are we replacing? I forget, forgive me. I know we had voted on this a while ago, but I don't remember the numbers. Do you, if you don't know them, that's okay, get it to me.
Yeah, we'll get it back to you.
I just, I'm curious. I know we've got some aging cameras. I don't want to know how many we're going to replace, how many we're going to add. I know that technology changes like laptops do. Once you walk out of the store, it's worthless. So.
We'll get that information.
Yeah, if you could, please, that would be great.
I have the, we have the initial, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Berry, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I do. Are we going to make sure that any lunch, our noon hour supervisors or gym teachers that are outside have walkie-talkies? Again, I agree with Mr. Sabal that cost should not even be a factor. This should be a priority because of student safety.
Anyone who exits or enters a building on a regular basis will have access, yes.
Okay.
First of all, I want to say to you and Mr. Awada, definitely, just some observations here. We have a P A system throughout the schools, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. They all should be functionable.
Yes.
I know in government buildings and hospitals, they use code words and rendezvous points. So if there is something that's happening that's an emergency, and sometimes the closest person that has a walkie-talkie is probably far away. We can use code words and rendezvous, I know, never use code red, right? But sometimes they just say blue, and, you know, northwest blue, and that could mean there's an issue somewhere, and the nearest administrator or teacher or Blue Line needs to get there. I just found that through all the, you know, trainings that I've been through, that it's a lot more efficient. And to Mr. Sabal's point, it's a lot more on, you know, on the confidential. So students won't figure it out, and, you know, every morning, there could be, okay, you know, the code word today is sunshine, whatever. Those are things that I think we should look at, just, you know, not saying we have to do it, but.
No, that's a great point.
Just an observation, because if someone is in a classroom, because we're in a classroom today, we're in 404, right? If there's an issue around the corner, that teacher could be the closest one. But if they don't have a walkie-talkie, they don't know about it. At least that teacher knows either shut their door or go out there and attend to the situation.
I do have one question.
Um, does Blue Line go through Alice?
They will be with us.
Okay, so they'll be.
And most of them are already trained, because many, there's many of them that are currently on duty.
Right.
Officers, so they've already, but they will be going through, they go through the training with the schools.
Okay, great.
They're going to go from it from our perspective.
Yeah, from our perspective.
Okay, thank you. Andrea, thank you very much. Wonderful presentation. Thank you, Mr. Awada, for all the work he did. And we're going to move on to the next item, which is policy discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. So as you know, on the superintendent report this evening, during the regular board meeting, we would be asking the board to vote on which policy firm to go with. I wanted just to put this on the study session, if there was to need for discussion prior to the Board of Education meeting. We did reshare with the entire board in the previous packet, plus other packets prior, the comparison between Trune and Neola, costs, and so forth. So I just wanted to open it up for a conversation, Madam President, prior to the meeting, if the board so chooses.
Does anybody have questions or comments on Najah?
So regarding the two, I mean, I think I'll just reiterate, you know, from the, my perspective and my, the way I felt about the two presentations, and ultimately, the cost between the two, considering the amount of time that it was going to take to facilitate the meetings, as well as the entire process for finalizing the policy. Even if we had gone with Neola, I believe that ultimately, I'll have to go back and look up the final cost, but even if we went with Trune, and we did an hourly rate, and we used up the same amount of time that Neola was saying was going to take for us to finalize the policy, it would still have been cheaper. And Trune is the company that we are currently using for our legal needs. Personally, I, they did come and present, whereas Neola did not. My personal feelings is I would be comfortable with going with Trune, based off the fact that we are currently using them. Their attorneys are in-house. Just my two cents, and I think that that's kind of where I stood from the very beginning.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hawaz?
Personally, I think we're ready, I don't know when we would need to vote, but I think there's not much more to actually hear from either one. I think we've pretty much kind of made up our minds, but I definitely want to be as tech savvy as we can. So, I mean, I don't want to even say which one I'm going to, which one I'd go with, but definitely ready to make the decision.
Mr. Sabal, did you have any comment?
Yeah, I did. That's okay. I don't disagree with Najah in the aspect of, this is a company we work with currently, but I would just, I would just keep in mind, I think, the à la carte purposes. We don't know what's to come around the corner, and the software that's utilized with one in comparison to the other. I mean, Trune, obviously. Yeah, I know that. I'm just saying, we need to really kind of take into consideration the softwares that are being used, and which one is more compatible with what we're looking to do. Because we're going to, we're going to implement it, right? And at the end of the day, you know, who's going to be managing this process and working with the policy from either of the two companies is most important here, so.
Right.
We, definitely, it's our vote. We should get feedback from the administration on thoughts, you know? At the end of the day, I don't know how you feel, but I know how I'm leaning, regardless of what you say. But, you know, I'm not, I'm not going to say I won't be swayed either way. I'm just saying.
Did you go back over it?
I did. I did. And my concern with Trune is this, is it's, the cost structure, you're right, seems to be a little more compatible with what we're looking to do.
Significantly.
But, you know, we got to look at the long run, and I just think that, you know, there's a lot of à la carte, based on what he said when he was here, you know?
But they're using a template, just like Neola. They're both using templates.
I get it, but they're both using templates.
Right.
Yeah, but if there's something that's added, that's my question, is what are we going to change? How are we going to change it? How often are we going to change it? Right, there's, I mean, that's my, that's my key. Whenever you get into open-ended contracts, it scares me, in the sense that things can come up where we're just going to start getting charged as we go along, and then you never know what you're going to run into. You can run into a brick wall and say.
I guess I go back to saying, even if you, even if you did an hourly rate for the amount of time that Neola's offering you, and you used up, you'd still be. You're talking about $26,650 from Neola, as opposed to $11,000 from Trune. And Trune, our, the attorneys, the company that we use, they are, they do have in-house attorneys, and they both are using templates. We're just catering, we're just putting, so they're going to both be legal documents. They're both going to follow the laws, and we are just adding what favor, like, what things would then affect Crestwood. So I guess I'm just not understanding, because I know.
It's not $11,000 flat fee, though.
It's $11,000 total. Annual updates are up to $2,500, up to. Now, yes, the annual updates for Neola are $2,590. Annual website maintenance is $650. Now, that was even if we aren't updating or maintaining, just maintenance. So they're totally, totally opposite. So, sorry, really quick. The other thing was, um, no, I forgot.
But it was his question.
Well, I, well, I know, sorry.
But, Mr. Sabal, did you have any more questions? Because we have Mr. Berry, Mr. Baydun, Ms. Berry, and.
No, good, you're good.
Okay, Mr. Berry.
So there's, there's a couple of things that I look at regarding cost. For a living, I get paid to save money, right, to do the right thing for the company. And when I look at this, there's two things that you never look to just save money on, and that's security, and also exposure of the district. If we're looking at policy, the last thing I would look at is cost because of the exposure. God forbid if something goes wrong, like it's happened in other districts in Michigan. We see what's going on in the courts and everything. I think. I want quality, not cost. Again, if they're super, super similar, then of course, cost could be the tipping point. But when I look at security of the children and policy, which is the exposure to the district, I don't look at cost initially. That would be the last variable. And I feel like Trune, when, it's like building, you know, it's like building a car. When you want to buy a car, if you're building it online, you know, the base price they always say is $32,000 or what. But by the time the car gets here with heated seats and power windows and whatnot, you're probably paying $10,000, $15,000, excuse me, more, which is à la carte. With Neola, I feel like the cost structure is what you see is what you get. Cost could change from there. Again, I'm not leaning toward either one. I'm just stating the facts right now until we go to vote. But in my opinion, the world has went virtual for a while, right? We hire people now out of state that work on our team. We have children going to school remotely. So to me, it's, it's not so bad if someone is not residing here anymore. I just feel like that's the trend of the world, and that's where it's going.
Thank you.
For my comment, I recall asking the Neola man that presented virtually, they don't have attorneys on staff, only as needed, where Trune is all attorneys. So I would want to go with the bus that would want to protect the district. I don't want to take a chance with somebody who is, yeah, they were probably administrators, that's wonderful, but I also have to look at the law and make sure that we protect the district with the attorneys that are going to take the responsibility. With that being said, I have looked to see, the majority of the districts are using Trune. So that's what I have to say.
I looked at both of them again and went through it very detailed. You know, we trust Trune to represent us. I just feel that we need to carry that out. And they do have attorneys that are readily available. And then I want to remind everybody that regardless of which company we go through, we still need to go through policy to fine-tune it to make it Crestwood's policy. So we are going to have to still go through it and, you know, modify some of the policies to make them what we want here at Crestwood.
Mr. Sabal?
Just a follow-up question. Ms. Berry, when you talk about the attorneys that are on staff, that's a separate part of the practice.
No, they're doing, they're doing, the attorneys do the whole.
Well, they're drawing up, yeah, I understand, but if they're going to be brought in, that's a separate fee. It's not a part of the flat fee, though.
Right.
So it's the same thing.
Same with Neola, yeah.
I know, I just want to make sure.
It was half the cost, less than half the cost.
For the attorney fees?
For, for Neola and Trune.
No, no, I'm just making a point to the attorneys that are on staff. They're on staff to the law firm. This is a separate part of the law firm that does policy. So what I'm saying is attorneys may be drawing this up, okay? And I can't imagine, I don't know if Dr. Musallam can speak to it or not, but, you know, regardless of which side, I'm sure a lot of the templates have had attorneys look at them, whether they're on staff or not. You know, you've dealt with this a lot more than I have, so I guess that question is to you.
No policies will be put out unless they're vetted. So all of these policies will have been vetted by legal.
And just to be sure, for, for the public's information, we are not talking about hiring an attorney company. We are talking about the policy company. This has nothing to do with our attorney or our attorney fees.
And Neola said they constantly scan for new laws and updates, and then bring it together, or bring it forward, without us even saying anything.
Ms. Junin, you had a question?
So I think that that was my whole point, was that being that they are both vetted by attorneys, and they're both using templates, I'm just not understanding, unless something changes for Crestwood, each company is going to keep their documents legal. They're not going to give us a policy that is not a legal document. So unless something changes for Crestwood, and we need to change something in our policies to better serve our district, I'm not understanding the extra cost. That's, that's my thing. And that was my, where I stood literally from the day that these were presented. I just, not understanding the extra cost if they're both legal documents. We have a company that we're using, granted, their attorneys we're using are for separate issues, but yes, there are attorneys that if there's an issue, they do go in-house. But unless something is changing that we are requesting a change in our policy, we really shouldn't be going back to Trune to ask for a change in policy, unless there's, again, a change in our district. Otherwise, the documents are legal and vetted by attorneys, so.
Ms. Hawaz?
Right, for both sides.
Could we get a, could we get a breakdown, or what, how much we've spent on Trune for the year thus far?
Different.
We can get that.
Different than just for, I understand. I'd just like to know what we've spent with Trune.
We can get that in the next Friday update.
Okay.
Dr. Musallam, do you have anything to add on the policy discussion?
No, I mean, everybody's making some valid points. You know, again, I mean, I don't want to repeat what everyone has said. My interface has been that Neola is easier to interface with than Trune. The online interface is a little bit easier. I mean, the big thing that sticks out to me is initial support options. The initial support options is where it could get very costly. And being that we're going to be building new policy, you know, that's something just to keep in mind. But whatever direction the board decides to go, we will follow suit, and we'll get right on it.
Thank you. All right, next on the agendas are.
Just clarification.
Trustee Hawaz, from what timeframe would you like the amount?
January to date.
January of 2022?
Yes, please.
Okay.
January 2022 to August 2022.
That's fine. I just wanted to verify. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Next update is.
Unless, I'm sorry, Madam President, would we also like what we've spent for 2021?
Yeah, whatever you'd like.
I mean, I think, I think it'd be good to see, that way, year over year, if we've.
I don't think you need it. I don't think you need it, because you are, you're going from June, you're, it's eight months, should give you a good snapshot. It depends on how fast you want, I mean, how fast you want them to get it.
I mean, I'll have to have it yesterday.
I can, I, the easiest way to do it is break it down by fiscal year.
Okay.
So if I go fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, which would take you July of twenty-one to June of twenty-two, and then I can break it into July of twenty-two to August of twenty-two.
Okay.
Thank you, Penny. Okay, let's move on, uh-
I'm sorry, Madam President, I just wanna make sure, just for Trune, correct?
Just for Trune.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to verify, sorry.
No problem, thank you. Thank you, guys. Can-
Did we have other?
Well, did we, were there other attorney fees? Is that what you're?
We have another attorney, yes. Keller Toma is also our attorney.
It's a different thing?
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I wasn't sure if that's what they were referencing, sorry.
Okay, so, we're gonna move on to the, uh, transportation update.
So we just wanted to take a minute just to update everyone. Andrea will discuss it as well. So at this point, we're, there's not gonna be any change in transportation for this year. Dean Transportation was able to obtain drivers, but that does not say we're not gonna continue our evaluation for future need. You know, Andrea can give a little bit more detail if I miss anything. And basically what it came down to was when they found enough drivers, the whole idea was, well, school year's so close, because we were in a crunch when they told us, hey, we only have two drivers. School year's so close, well, now they have drivers, but we're gonna continue with the process we started prior so that we can bring something back to the board for future, uh, o- opportunities and options. Because now, you know, in further discussion and after the board's feedback, it helped us think through some things, and we have some ideas that we're gonna work with Dean on. Andrea, is there anything that I missed?
Um, our, our big, obviously the big push trying to do it quick was because we were afraid we were gonna leave students stranded. And based on your feedback, we, you know, just on the, there's stops pretty close. If we were to, uh, looking at that, that was too difficult to do quickly and then leave any, anyone in a bind. Um, once we knew we could secure drivers, it was, it gave us a good talking point that will set up meetings from now throughout the course of the year, just to kinda look at what we could do smarter in terms of our routes and our transportation, so we're able to front-load in the future and then keep the community informed. The only reason we were trying to do any changes was at the prospect of not having enough drivers.
Ms. Fawaz, question?
I, I think it's great that we, you know, got some drivers. Um, and I know we're only a week away, so, you know, we're not gonna sit here and change the world right now, but seeing that you've already done the, uh, research and the work, are we also looking to still eliminate, like, um, the, I know we, we still have what, like, first run, second run, third run, so we don't have students in the building or, you know, an, an hour in the building waiting for a school bus or vice versa?
Yeah, those are the pieces. We're looking at how we can do it safely but still front-load and keep all of the things that were, were shared into, with, with the safety of the students being
Being key, right?
The key. And, and the survey results were interesting because it was of the students who were eligible, just in terms of who actually uses it, it kinda gave us a gauge for as we go through those discussions of if we were to have families commit to transportation and build routes based on that, it would free up quite a bit, because right now we're built, routes are built based on students in houses because the county sends that information, whereas if we, over the course of this upcoming year, look at how many, really track the data of how many students are using, what students are using the bus, and build based on that, it, it could lend to an easier-
So would you be gathering that data for like the first quarter and then, um, changing?
No, we're not looking to change, just because I feel like a lot of times parents set things up for the school year, so it would be using that information to kinda project plans for the future and keeping the community and you informed along the way of possibilities, and kind of keeping, revisiting this throughout the course of the year to keep you informed, and then just kind of of the plan as we go through.
Mr. Sabo?
A few questions. You, you said track, how do we track? The bus driver's gonna take attendance on who comes off and who goes on?
The number of students per stop. You know, as they, as they go through.
Do they actually count? I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm just curious.
They have, they have an idea, yes. Not cons, not daily.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna-
If there's a bus aid and they're, they're, they're looking at that data, yes.
If we're gonna track, then we need to track. If we're gonna track, then we need to know who's on the bus. I mean, the reason I say that is because, again, I'll go back to my previous point in the last meeting.
Commit to the whole year.
On Evangeline, I'm, I'm sorry, on, on Whitefield and Lawrence, there's a bus stop. On Kenmore and Lawrence, there's a bus stop, and on Wilson and Gully, there's a bus stop, right? And then you got kids kind of flowing in these different directions. And I understand that there may be a few kids that live on Gully that need to walk to the Wilson bus stop. So, you know, maybe that's something we look at. I just, just food for thought, okay?
Ours was more in how do we can condense those stops so that you're not the time of them.
I'm with you. No, what I was gonna say was, I get, you know, maybe one, maybe even two stops in certain neighborhoods, you know, a center point. Like, that neighborhood, perfect center point, literally, would be Evangeline and Lawrence, just throwing it out, right?
Right.
And then if you need to stop at the other one, fine. My next point was gonna be, I don't know if we should look throughout the entire twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year to apply this for twenty twenty-three and going on. I think we need to do this quicker. And I'll tell you why I think we should. First of all, it'll help the bus company, okay? Because if we're gonna run a sample, let's run a sample, right? If kids aren't using the bus, that sent you a check, yes, my kids will be using the bus, and they've used it three times, then a letter needs to go out saying if your kid's not gonna use the bus more often, we're gonna remove them from the list. Because we're paying for things that people aren't using, that's just not smart, right? So I think to waste another eight, nine months doing this sample, and then if we're going to track, then, and I don't wanna put any more on these bus drivers, so don't get me wrong, okay? And there's no, you know, scanner where the school ID goes on, and we're not that high-tech. But to use the word "track," right? And, because you can have twenty-five kids on the bus every single day, but they could be twenty-five different kids three, three out of five days, right? So I just wanna make sure we have the right numbers, that's all. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Maybe we spot-check one day a week as they're coming off. A teacher, I don't know, somebody, right? But we just can't let this say, well, we'll figure it out as we go along. No, let's just figure it out and get it right so that we can help Dean and we can minimize our costs going forward, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
Ms. Berry?
No, I was just gonna say, um, I agree with Mr. Sabo, but at, at the same time, we have to be careful about condensing those routes, um. It, it's dark in, uh, winter. When I leave to go to work at seven o'clock, it's pitch black. And when I see those kids at the corner of Wilson and, um, what is, not Wilson, I'm sorry, um, Simone and John Daly, and they're coming from all directions, I, I feel for those children. And they're by themselves, and is it safe? No, it's not safe, but they have to take that chance and do it. So, um, that's one thing that I am concerned with. Is I don't want kids to walk four, five, six blocks by themselves, because it, it is pretty dark at that time in the morning.
So I think if we had a, a better idea of who was taking the bus, you wouldn't necessarily need to condense the stops, because you would have an, like, how many kids, and you, it still wouldn't take as long. But I, my, my concern, if I'm understanding that correctly, but my concern is, like, I had a, I was here for picture day today, and my concern was a mother had asked me, because her, her child gets picked up at seven-twenty and then doesn't lea- get home until almost four. So she's like, why do I have to be the first stop, first route, and then the last route? So it's such a long day for her kids, like, at least kind of mix it up a little bit where if I'm the first route being, being picked up, I might be the first route being dropped off. That's a really long day for a fifth grader, so there's, there's a lot, and I get there's a lot of different things to look at, but I feel like maybe if we also mix up those things and, and kinda look at that, if, if your route is this way in the morning, then it might be flipped on the way home, and the kids are not spending such a long time out of the house.
If I may, Madam Chair, this whole busing thing is one of those things, you don't know it until you don't know it. So like, we learned a lot this year.
Started peeling back the layers of the-
Yeah, but, but the point you're making, all, all the points that everyone's making are very valid, and we're gonna go there.
Mr. Berry?
Does it Dean or whoever's doing the busing look at the routes and find the most efficient way for the drivers and the fuel efficiency and getting the kids back?
They do, but it's based on who's within that route. So it's not based, but based on-
So the district provides information.
The county does.
The county, and who's using the routes, then they come up with their most efficient way to take the kids and bring them back. Is that right?
So they, so the county plots it based on student enrollment, yeah, so from our MyStar data of this address, this many stu- So they do that, and then it's, it's built based on the, that, so it's not, that was our, trying to make people commit.
But that's our data points, right?
Yeah, so we-
That's what we have. So we have those data points, and that's how they're, and other districts are the same way?
Yes.
I'm a guess, okay. So if they build the routes off of that data and that population, so the most concentrated areas in the district have more stops or whatnot, right? So if we're looking at that, and that's the most efficient way, I think, you know, this could be a discussion that goes for days, right? Or we can end it now, but at the end of the day, I think we have to look at the busing company and their efficiency, right? If they're hauling a bus around with six kids in it, and another, another, excuse me, another bus has twenty-five kids, right? We have to look at the efficiency, and I think the only way to do that, to Trustee Sabo's point, is, you know, maybe it's just a head count. To me, if it's twenty-five kids the first day, and it's twenty-five the second, even though they're different kids, at the end of the day, that's twenty-five scenes, right? So we don't wanna put more, um, burden on the bus drivers. Uh, I think just a quick head count for the first couple of weeks and then do it again in a month or two months takes five minutes, right? I think that'll help. But I, the data we have comes from the county, comes from MyStar. It's what we have to go with. And I did receive the postcard, by the way. And we did fill it out, okay? We're online, you know, um, had to put in a long URL to get online and do it. But we did it. And to me, that data's only good for people that put it in. There's gonna be probably sixty, seventy percent of people that didn't do it, so.
So, and when we cross-reference what we receive and what we get, we can then have a better picture of what we need.
It's gonna take time to figure it out, for sure.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but transportation decides the bus stops and that, not the district, correct?
But, but, but there's a but.
Okay.
We can request.
Sway, you can discuss.
And they work with us.
So the rule is, is that, like, I'll give the example of Riverside. Riverside is a mile walk-up. But the district, those students right there get a bus. Literally right across, so it's, it's not the true, and that's what we were looking to do, is to make it a true mile walk-up. Where the student that lives by Hillcrest is a walker. So they have to walk from Hillcrest to Riverside, but two houses on that side get a bus. So that was for our piece of a mile, fifth grader, a mile up the road doesn't get a bu- but literally there's a crossing yard, you could throw a rock to Riverside. So that was where, where, for, like, okay, for, I taught at Riverside for fourteen years, and my head, it was like, okay, if we tweak this slightly where it is fair but equal, right, the idea of that same radius, then it would lessen some of that, but then it was a discussion of like the safety, but that student's still crossing a busy road, just like that student's crossing a busy road. So when we were looking at it, was the, a mile walk-up is what the, what the state and county says, and we don't honor it, because at some point that was, it was determined that they needed a bus, and that's what, how it's always been, and so for us, it was the, I don't know if that necessarily makes sense, so.
So that's a good point. So would you change that now?
And that was, that was what we were looking at to do, is making it universal, where like-
You wanna be standard for the one mile for all the schools.
The only thing that wasn't a mile is students who have to cross the Rouge River, and we said there's no safe place to cross, because there's not a sidewalk, so we would bus.
We can't afford boats.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, uh, we have one more question.
That was the piece.
I guess you, you said it, um, is there sidewalks where those houses are? Come to Riverside, or is there no sidewalks? The ones that you're throwing, you're saying you can throw a stone to?
Right across the street.
Right, right here.
Right behind.
So they cross at the light?
Yeah. But, but we bus them.
From where? I'm confused. Right by the custard hut?
Yeah.
Are you kidding? Oh, I didn't, I didn't know that. I just thought that it was like maybe along the golf course where there's no sidewalk.
And that's what we're saying. We're saying, that's why we said we wouldn't honor the mile behind us, because they, there's no safe place.
So can we just, can we put a traffic guard there or something?
There is one.
There is. I know, there's one down there, but there isn't one across by Custard Hut.
No, there's one here. Not Custard Hut.
Yeah, I know there's one there. You said across from-
Custard Hut.
Custard Hut, I'm sorry. Custard Hut, Custard Hut. I know, and I know that kids have a tendency to cross there because they don't wanna walk all the way down to-
Are you saying by the golf course?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just trying, now I'm confused, sorry.
And by Custard Hut.
Right.
Okay, like, if they're crossing, if they're crossing there, if it's easier to just put a crossing guard, and doesn't the, um, the city have to pick that up?
The crossing guards-
The cu- I understand, but if they're coming from that street.
Right, no, they're not, they're not coming. They're not coming, and that's what we're, that's what we were saying of in our plan of looking of saying that they don't get a bus, is it better in that if we say we need a crossing guard there and a crossing guard here, if we cut that piece? That's, that's the stuff that we didn't kind of get to fruition.
So, um, I think that's a great idea, Trustee Berry brought up, but there's no, I don't believe there's a crosswalk. I, I haven't paid attention, there might be. If there is, that's a great idea, but I, there isn't, right? So legally, they have to go to the corner?
They have to go to this corner.
I mean, if they're coming, I'm sorry, but if they're coming from that way, they're just walking from where the Custard Hut is, that street over here to the corner and coming back, and, you know, safety above all else.
This transportation thing, we can go on and on, but for now, let's use the data from the county, and let's go with it. And then let's progress and bring this back in, maybe December, January, we talked about.
We'll revisit, kind of.
And let us know, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your update, though, and we're gonna go to Field of Dreams lease agreement, Dr. Masalim?
Thank you. So, uh, as you all received, Trustee Fawaz requested some information, I shared it with the entire board. Um, we also did have, get, received, you know, a FOIA request on that as well. Um, and we submitted that FOIA information that was given to the person that requested the FOIA. So basically, just to give a quick summarization of Field of Dreams, so on and so forth. Um, and just to give a quick timeline, uh, this administration came in in two thousand nineteen, COVID hit. There was zero activity in twenty twenty. This is the first year we've really had activity at Field of Dreams. And doing our research, uh, Field of Dreams was leased to the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League for one dollar uh, for many years. That lease agreement expired in like two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. It was in the packet that I shared with you. The lease agreement was never brought back, and we're currently, Penny is currently working with our attorneys to put together that lease agreement again, and hopefully we'll bring it to the board at the next meeting. Um, I just wanted to take a few minutes to discuss that information. As you saw within the packet, Elite Sports and North Dearborn Heights Baseball League have put in thousands of dollars to support Field of Dreams. That includes new clay, maintenance, so on and so forth. They, these are things that we did not have to pay out of our pockets as a school district. In return, our agreement with, uh, Elite Sports was they allow us to use their facilities uh, when we need their facilities. And they don't charge us, but they submitted an invoice, and this was something I requested about six months ago, uh, with Elite Sports. I requested that they submit invoices to us so we can keep track of what the costs would be, so that we can have it on file. We use Elite Sports, as you all know, we have overcrowding issues at the high school. And we have limited, you know, we get a bad rain, the field floods, you know, we have a lot of issues. So we use Elite Sports during the school day for gym classes. We also use Elite Sports to help us out with testing. We also use Elite Sports, um, for practices. Anytime our school needs something, Elite Sports is contacted, opens up the doors, we're good to go. Because of that partnership, that is one of those city district partnerships that in two thousand nineteen was a very major push by the board and on, that we build those partnerships as we're building partnerships with the city of Dearborn Heights. And through these partnerships, you know, we've been able to benefit one another. Because it's not benefiting the district, it's benefiting the kids, it's community-based. So I just wanted to make it clear that what's happening with Elite Sports and Field of Dreams is a common partnership that's been going on with the city of Dearborn Heights since two thousand ten. And as you can see, the billable, you know- And as you can see, the billable, you know, uh, Elite Sports could have billed us over $17,000 to use their facilities in the last six, seven months, but we have not paid that because of the agreement we have. Now granted, the lease agreement did expire in 2015, 2016. We're cleaning that up right now, we're getting that lease agreement, you know, done through our attorneys. And again, we hope to have that lease agreement to the board prior to, so you could review it at least a couple of weeks in advance before we bring it to vote. But I just wanted to take a few minutes to discuss that because it, again, and, and the other thing too is, and, um, and I appreciate trustee Fawaz and I, we've had some good dialogue on this. Um, you know, the other thing to that on, and that point is, you know, we're willing to work with any organization that wants to work with us from the city. We have not turned down any organization. When the Boy Scouts come in, we don't charge them to use our facilities, okay? They, they use our facilities. Um, there's been times where U of M Dearborn has come and say, hey, can we use your facilities? And we've allowed them to use our facilities. The purpose behind that is because that builds that partnership, that builds that community. And, you know, we just had a phenomenal meeting today with Kayla Kubits to talk about the theater program and the, the next steps of our theater program and how we're going to build that theater program. Again, that builds that community atmosphere, you know? And so the idea is that we want to continue to build those partnerships. And I understand and I respect the questions that came across because we really haven't had a very long dialogue on this, but I just wanted the board to be aware as well as the community that this is all about community partnerships and we want to help one another.
Thank you. Any question?
Yeah, I, I love the community partnership idea. Um, I can't stress what you're saying enough. I think it's essential to all of our survival, you know? I, I would say, and I know this is kind of pre your time here, North Dearborn Heights Baseball League's been around a long time. So I don't know where the intertwining between Elite Sports and North Dearborn Heights Baseball League became one, which is okay regardless. And, um, I would just say that the contracts for anything, especially long-term use like Field of Dreams, those contracts going forward, you know, I'm not going to look pat because it doesn't really matter now, but they have to be up to date and they shouldn't be more than three years at a time, obviously, for legal purposes and changes between the nonprofits or the for-profits in the school district. And I can attest, uh, coaching football that Elite Sports, since we're intertwining the two again, has been open to, I don't think they've ever said no to us when the weather was bad, you know? And it's prime time for them too. I think it was five o'clock, which the rentals come in and, and they've allowed us to use parts of that. So the partnership's great, but regardless of the institution, whether it be Elite Sports, University of Michigan Dearborn, anybody and everybody, it's not even about the money, it's about the partnerships. But I think we have to have the contractual rights solidified going forward so that we are not doing this. We're looking back realizing it ended in 2016, six years later. Again, I'm not blaming anybody, it doesn't matter, but just going forward, those things got to be tidied up and, and we've got to have them on the calendar for expiration so that we're dealing with them six months prior to expiration, so we never experience this again.
So ultimately, I mean, obviously we have to protect the district at the end of the day. I mean, there wasn't necessarily a contract that didn't also hold us to anything since we were out of contract with them. Um, it definitely, I'm, the whole community partnership aspect, I think I, from the very beginning, it was something that as a community member alone, I think I was begging for our school district at the time to just do things with community members. Mr. Mackey is, and like Mr. Trustee Sabo said, I mean, like I've never seen anybody go to him and him, you know, turn them away. And if it's for the kids, he's always about doing what's right for the kids. So it's definitely whether there was a contract or not, I mean, again, it didn't, it didn't hurt us not having a contract because we were out of contract and if we wanted to do something, we, we could have. But at the same time, there's a benefit to the district by allowing them to use that where we didn't have to go elsewhere and our kids could safely walk to his facility for things that they needed, so.
But when it's being called out, is my point, it becomes an issue. That's where I say going forward.
A hundred percent. And again, at the end of the day, we're, we do have to look for the best interest of us. Well, somebody, somebody obviously was FOIA.
Yes, we did receive a FOIA and we submitted and we, we sent it, I believe today we sent it.
And let's remember, people FOIA things, people FOIA things and they try to prove points and it's, and it's okay because.
No, it's okay, anybody can FOIA anyone.
Right, a hundred percent. I've FOIAed myself.
Yeah, so, um, I do want to attest that I did a lot of research myself initially and, um, I think I, I agree with trustee Sabo on contracts, you know, whoever you're going to lease anything to, irrelevant of district or whatnot. I like the three by three by three, three years, three-year right to renewal, three-year right to renewal, right? Whatever the monetary value is. Um, just so we understand that whoever's in charge of any of our real estate has proper insurance, that doesn't put our district at exposure, for sure.
Correct.
Um, I can't remember how many years ago, um, my kids were playing in the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League and I seen trucks and gold dirt, like actual MLB dirt being spread there, right? At the time, I was too naive to understand, you know, what's going on and who's doing it. Um, but it was the North Dearborn Heights Baseball Association at the time. Um, and I, I just want to say, spending so much time at the schools lately because of sports and fall sports, um, you know, the coaches have been putting in, you know, between two-a-days and meetings, probably six to eight hours a day at the schools. And I can tell you, um, we have a key to that facility next door, um, Elite Sports in regards to, you know, the kids have a key, not us. They, they go in at will and whatever they need is being done. And I did see for myself, the last testing that took place at Elite Sports, I can tell you, was not a great, uh, reflection on our district. Our kids didn't do a great job of keeping it clean and taking care of what they should have, like you do when you visit somewhere. Um, I don't know if we ever gotten a bill for that damage.
No, and I offered it many times.
I personally seen the damage and I was just at awe with that. Um, irrelevant of who's in charge of what or whatever, but that building next to us, that Elite Sports and the North Dearborn Heights Baseball Association have been a blessing to our students in the district. Let's not forget, they have access to other districts neighboring around us. They can use any fields they need around us. They do have, um, a green light in Dearborn to go to Dearborn High or whatnot, but you know, this is, this is in our backyard, right? So we need to, I can tell you, we use it more than they do. Um, so I can attest to say I've seen it with my own eyes and I support the partnership for sure, but you know, I think it should be renewed on paper for whoever it is on any real estate that we're going through and just to ensure that we have the proper insurance is in place.
Okay. Um, so yes, I, I did ultimately, um, ask all the questions for the Field of Dreams and I did see the North Dearborn Heights Youth League contract and the expiration and I do agree with Mr. Sabo that the league is different than, um, Elite. Um, as far, and I know that expired like 2016. Um, so I have, and I'm all for partnerships and especially since this isn't our backyard, but I'm not really into, um, excluding anyone either. So I personally am not ready for any type of contract until we've at least have like a, you know, call to action to the community of who, and, and I know, you know, nobody else has come forward, but let's put it out there of who would like to come forward, who would like to be a partner with us, who would like to help our kids, um, with the, uh, sports. Um, and then also, you know, um, the, the administration did provide, you know, some invoices. Now, yes, we haven't been, you know, Elite Sports has only been there, you know, a year, year and a half. So it's not like we've been using these guys since, uh, 2010. We have always allowed people, not just, you know, the youth league, we, I, I think we are always very generous in helping the community for whoever would like to use our facilities. I, I honestly, I don't even think you've ever said no, you know? So, so I think we're, we're very generous with that, even with festivals, um, and, uh, if there's anything going on here, we always, um, we always help with the overflow of parking because, you know, there is no parking, you know? He, he has the contract for Elite Sports, but not the actual parking spots. So we help with that too. It is a give and take. But the issue I had was all this time, you know, we've been operating and then, you know, we asked for invoices and these invoices, you know, as I showed you in the email and I don't think everybody was, I don't know how many, you know, I don't know if the feedback went to them, but, um, I have an issue with a lot of these invoices. So a lot of these like, the invoice numbers are the same. The content in the invoice number like for testing, as you mentioned, you know, one of them, we had, you know, testing for four days straight from Wednesday to a Saturday for over $6,000 that would have been charged. And I realize this is just for time, but it doesn't actually state that here. So if I'm looking at this, I can't see that. This looks like we were charged that amount of money. And on a Saturday, I mean, the only thing, you know, we said is maybe it was for makeup or anything else, but then we were still charged the exact same amount or supposedly charged for the exact same amount, as if it was a normal workday of our kids going in there and testing. So I guess the integrity of all of these invoices in a nutshell, I have a major problem with. So they, they all would have to be looked at and revisited, which then, you know, in turn makes me look into things deeper, you know? Uh, we provide, you know, there's thousands and thousands of dollars showing donations to the district, but for time, uh, it was never, time is donated, not actual dollars, right? But it's not stated that way, so it's a little deceiving to me. And then in addition to that, and I know, we, we could say, i- it's none of our business how the accounting on their end is, but in a way, I, I feel like it is because it's, it's the integrity of us. Are you the person that we're doing business with? Are you double dipping? Are you, you know, using this for taxes? We're, we're not a nonprofit, we are a public school, but all, all of these things just start to go into question. So first, I would like to, um, invite anyone in the community that would like to be a partner with us and, you know, help us and we help you and donate your time, money, whatever. Second, um, definitely not happy with any of the paperwork or practice that was, um, in here and I would absolutely not be ready for any type of contract yet. And then the Field of Dreams, especially for, I mean, you guys are talking like a three-year, we're not even sure what we want to do with that field yet. So we tabled that whole discussion, but, um, I don't think we're nowhere near coming up with an agreement.
Thank you. Dr. Masalim, can you, uh, just briefly explain for everybody who may not understand, uh, the invoices versus time versus money versus in-kind donation?
So we look at these as in-kind donations, that there wasn't an actual, uh, trans- transfer of funds from Elite to the district, that this is an in-kind donation of time, but the, the monetary amount illustrates that this is what that time would have cost if an, if they were to charge us and/or another organization would have gone in there. That also amount is at a discounted rate. Um, I'd have to get the document, I believe Elite Sports gives us like a 15 or 25% discount based on what they charge, um, um, other organizations. So these are looked at as in-kind donations for time use, but the numbers there fiscally represent what it would cost if we did have to pay.
Okay, and then I believe Ms. Kaminsky had some.
I'm sorry, front met of chair. One, one of these charges wasn't even put on an invoice till six months later, eight months later.
Okay. Those are, you're talking about the in-kind, uh, you, you, you refer to them as time invoices, right?
It doesn't state time, though.
No, but you're saying, those are the invoices you're referring to?
Yes.
That wasn't filled out.
We have five invoices provided so far.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Um, I just wanted to clarify something. When we open up Field of Dreams, um, to the community to use it, we need to be very careful. We have had problems and we have in the past said no. Um, we had a revival group who wanted to use it at one point. We had a circus who came to town who wanted to use it. So we have to, I mean, I just, I just want to be clear that we're good with using it for our kids and for within our community, but, um, my interpretation at least is worn at in the business to rent it out for whoever might want to use it for an event. So I think we have to be very careful about that. I know it was a big deal about the circus, um, they threatened a lawsuit and this was back around 2002, long before I was on the board, um, but it, it just can be a problem. So I think we have to be very careful in our wording. That's all.
So I guess I'm confused because I, I, are we questioning him giving us all this in-kind time? Are we, was that what we're questioning?
I'm questioning.
He's giving it to us for free, right? We, we haven't paid a penny, correct?
I'm, I'm questioning.
Dr. Masalim, have we paid anything?
No, we have not paid anything.
So that's where I'm confused. So what, we're questioning the invoices because of what he wrote down in the invoices?
I'm questioning the invoices, how they are. If you look at them like, you know, there's, there's five here, two out of five have the exact same invoice number. If you read the contents and actually see what would have been charged, okay, and what we're being charged and how much and when it's like the date versus the actual use.
I understand, but I, if, how, how said that, they caused a lot of damage over there and he didn't bill us. And I have to say, Mike has always been, uh, has come above and beyond wherever we've needed him and I, I don't, I hope, I don't think that he would do something like that. I mean, we haven't paid a penny. If you, if you're questioning the hours, okay, maybe that can be fixed if it's, but I don't understand why we would question his credibility.
Because according to the data I'm looking at, the integrity is, I would question it. I, I, I can only go based off what I'm looking at.
So, okay.
Can we, uh, Mr. Noon had a question?
The first thing I want to say is, he didn't charge us. So he can't then turn around and show in his accounting and all of that, that he charged us for anything. The second thing is.
It's right here.
No, no.
This shows.
He's just showing.
Showing and, and so when, so when you provide this to your, to the IRS, for example, this doesn't say anything of that I charged time or I donated time or anything like that. It doesn't state that.
You don't, so, okay. So my next thing is, do you know what a facility like that charges to rent out per hour? My child plays soccer and when he played at Wicksum, let's just use for example, on a quarter of a field, they charge $500 an hour to, to the team. We, we, our team, I had to collect funds at the time, I was team manager, paid $500 per hour for a quarter of his, of his field. So he was, he would get a thousand, that field would have four teams practicing on it and they would be collecting a thousand dollars for an hour to rent that facility, for out, for the hour. So you're, I don't think you understand what the cost of his, those, those facilities do not, they cost a lot of money, first of all, changing the turf every couple of years, every so many years, I'm not sure how, how often or how long does a turf, um, I'm almost done. Right, I mean, how many, you know?
I did, I wanted to let everybody finish their comments without.
Like how often does a field have to change turf? Turf is not cheap, so those, but I mean, ultimately, how many millions does it cost to change? So I think we have to look at a facility like, I mean, and there is a relationship there. I'm not going to question his integrity because his integrity has shown us that he's not charged us for damage that our children have made to his facility. I mean, that in itself speaks for, you know, huge, you know? So I, I guess I'm, am I going to then call the IRS and say, hey, did, did Mr. Mackey tell you that he donated this time and didn't charge us? I mean, I can't go that far. I just know, until, unless someone shows me otherwise, I, I, I'm not going to make accusations. I know that what he has shown us is, he has given us, and it's been a relationship, a hundred percent. We give, he gives, but it's the kind of relationship I want. If we have to send our kids elsewhere to test, do we know how much it costs us?
Can we, um, can we answer the other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I can attest and I know trustee Sabo could attest, um, and Dr. Masalim and the administration could attest to the use of the facility because I personally have been there with the kids numerous times. Um, every time it rained, Monday through Thursday last year and through this year, I can tell you we're there as a team, over 102 kids, give or take a few. So we did use the facility, that I can attest to, those are facts, okay? The damage that was done during the testing last year. The damage that was done during the testing last year, I can attest to, because I've seen it. It was, it was very heartbreaking to see that. Um, can I also attest to the, not only the facility, but also the, you know, cases of water that are brought out to some of the kids? The Gatorade, the, the, whatever, anything. We had carte blanche in that facility. And to be honest with you, that gentleman's son plays at Dearborn High. He lives on the other side of town. So to me, it's, it is a partnership. Um, I'm not questioning his integrity. I believe there's a derailment. Salwa, I see what you're saying and I definitely understand that. I believe that, you know, I don't want to make an accusation. I'm assuming he never intended on billing us. So when he started printing these, he just put the times that we were there on paper to show, because i- if that's the case, I don't know, I wasn't a part of that discussion. Um, but it's a moot point to me because the kids really enjoy going to that facility and I hope we can continue to carry a partnership with Elite for our kids. That's just my...
I, I understand everything you're saying and I don't disagree with you, Salwa. I really don't. Doing what I do for a living, everything has to be in order. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. Here's the issue I have. We are not the IRS. It is not for me to see what his in-kind donations are or are not and whether or not I need to pull a 4506T and have him show me what he's pulled and what he's done. Because I know where you're coming from, but I think, again, you know, I know everything they're saying. They're, they're, they're talking from emotion and we should be in a sense because this is a community partner. You're pointing to, you know, some, uh, invoices, but I also know, and I'm going to put this out there tongue-in-cheek and I'm sorry if I offend anybody, there's a lot of political strife in this city right now. And whether or not he is involved in it, I don't know and I don't care. These children cannot pay the price for what happens at City Hall. That has never and should never ever happen here, okay? So I know what you're saying. You're absolutely right. From a financial perspective, his invoices should be in order. And I would ask, you know, Ms. Morgan, going forward, when those come through, just say, hey, you know, we need invoices that reflect actual whatever for the sake of our accounting. Okay? But I, I just don't, I don't want, and I'm not saying you're doing it, okay? I'm not saying that's the case here at all. But I just heard rumblings recently that there's something going on with the city of Dearborn Heights and, and his name came up. I don't care about that stuff. I don't care what happens over there. I am not here for them. I'm here for these children. And when these children, if we create a problem for Mr. Mackey, right? Where we say, hey, we're going to the IRS for this, and I know we're not saying that, but he's going to sit back and go, wait a second, I've done everything I can to help you guys, your kids are blocked out. Now our kids are going to be on that muddy field which we can't fix until next year, covered in their, up to their ears in mud because of some political situation here in the city of Dearborn Heights that I don't care about. These children cannot be pawns, and I'm not saying you're doing, I'm saying in general, I will not allow these children to be pawns for a political, you know, fight, political disagreement, whatever it may be. They can do whatever they want over there. When I, you know, when, when I go to city council and I sit, I'm there as a citizen. When I sit here, I'm a trustee to protect the community and these children and I really don't care about the community when it comes to the children. I'm sorry if I offend anybody, I don't care. It's about the kids, okay? I don't have three children in this district, one graduated. I have 1,450 at the high school. I've got 4,200, 4,100 altogether. And if Mr. Mackey's doing right by them, then I, I really, honestly, the invoices should be correct, you're right going forward. I'd love to see those fixed because they need to be fixed, but I'm not going to slap the man on the wrist for it because I don't think he's benefited from it financially because he hasn't, right? That's my point. I'm not disagreeing with you, but I am highlighting one thing. Please, everybody here, leave these children out of the politics of the city because they have no business in it. They're not here for that, they don't care about the politics of the city or anything else. And I'm not saying you're doing it, I'm just saying in general, because I heard something recently, I'm like, wait a second. Like, I don't want to go after anybody for the sake of these kids because that's not what we're here for. So that's my two cents and I'm sorry.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Hi, um, I wasn't going to give my two cents, but I am. I just want to thank Mr. Mackey because I have found him to always be the most generous, kindest person around. He has bent over backwards for our kids and I would really hate for this discussion, as innocent as it may be, to put a bad taste in his mouth. So from me as an individual, I want to thank him.
I second that.
I third that.
Madam Chair, I want to respond.
Salwa?
Okay, so, thank you, Mo. Given your profession, I, I would, I would figure you of all people could understand what I'm looking at.
1,000%.
Okay. Um, and it, nothing to do with city, I could care less what's going on in City Hall or the other politics there. So yes, okay, of course I'm looking at the kids and our district. This contract was in place for a dollar a year. Elite was only built a year and some change ago, okay? It's not like we've been abusing Mr. Mackey's facility, okay? So understand that. There was no contract all of this time. It is a give and take, but I think you guys, yes, he scratched our back, they've scratched their, how, whatever, they work together, okay? But you, I, I think we are underestimating the district's worth too and what we provide to him also. I mean, it, it was a dollar a year, okay? Yes, it expired in 2018 for the field, for the, the old contract. And, and, and not just that, but regardless, I don't care if it was Mr. Mackey or Mr. John Doe, if they gave us a thousand million dollar donation, okay? If they're not doing something properly, okay, that reflects on, I would take that personally as a board member on my integrity of not doing the right thing. We still have an obligation to do the right thing, even if, you know, you could be giving me whatever you want, but if, if it's not right, it's not right. We, we can't accept that.
I don't disagree.
So, um, it's almost time to start our board meeting, Ms. Berry. Did you have your hand up?
No, I, I... I still have two other things I wanted to discuss.
On the agenda?
They're not on the agenda, um, but I did mention them. One was, um, regarding the partnership with Henry Ford. I had sent Dr. Masalim something and the other thing was, um, further question regarding two new hires that we may have to go into closed session for.
Do we, um, can we table those for our next...
Well, the new hires are for tonight.
Okay. Do you, uh...
I'm all second. Going into closed session if you need me to.
Going, going in a closed session for what?
Personnel.
If they're hires, they're not our personnel, can we go into closed session for people that are not our personnel?
If they're not our personnel, I, I can't answer that.
They have to add, according to what Gar used to always tell us, they have to agree for you to bring them up openly and then if you go in, they have to request to go into closed session and they're not even our employees.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think because they're not our employees, we can't go into closed to discuss them.
I mean, I can, I can discuss it in open, I just confidentiality-wise was trying to be protected.
I mean, they're, they're not, they're, they're not our employees yet until after the board meeting.
All right, well, I agree. I wouldn't discuss anything in open when it comes to personnel. I agree with Mo.
I, I think it's, I think it should be in...
So did you motion to go into closed?
I, I am making a motion that we go into closed session to discuss personnel.
I second.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. No. Go for it.
Um, can you do a vote call?
Mo?
Yeah? We're going to meet yet.
Oh, yes. No, it's okay. No, I was going, order. Sue, yes?
I'm going to say yes. No?
Uh, yes.
No.